Hi folks who are joining us right now. We're just going to take one minute to let attendees come in. We are also going live on Facebook. Thank you.
All right, folks, streaming again. It's cool. It's exciting. I've never been on this side of the webinar before.
And Bobak, let's have you take it away.
All right. Thanks, Jay. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. My name is Bob Akisvandari, and I'm the VP of Political Engagement for the United Democratic Club. One of the core principles of the United Democratic Club is that we do the work. Hashtag do the work. And that means that after the candidates and their policies and proposals are weighed, and our board makes its recommendations, and the membership votes to endorse, and the dust settles, we don't just walk away and put out an email and call it a month or two. Our membership shows up and does the work, from canvassing and phone banking to fundraising and writing opinion pieces in the paper and on our blog. Our membership works to elect principled Democrats that advance long-term solutions to our thorniest challenges at the state, local, and federal level. If you're interested in joining us in this work, you should come join us at uniteddemz.org. And tonight, we're excited to co-host this forum with the District One Supervisor candidates with the Ed Lee Asian Pacific Democratic Club. And I'll give it to Jay briefly to speak a little bit to the club. And then I'll toss it to Tara Moriarty, who's joining us this evening as our moderator, forum moderator.
Thank you, Bobak, for that introduction. As everyone knows, the Edwin M. Lee Asian Pacific Democratic Club has always been proud to bring Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to be active in the democratic process. The Richmond District has a strong density and diversity of Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders. And so we felt like it was especially important to highlight the candidates, many who are Asian Pacific, Asian and Pacific Islanders, and highlight those candidates' positions and have a thorough discussion about where they stand and what they hope to bring to the district. I see that we have our president, Selena Sun, joining, and so we'll actually pass it off to her to conclude our remarks.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, sorry I'm late. But thank you so much for joining. This is, I've been looking really, I've been looking forward to this for pretty much the entire month. I grew up in the Richmond, so this means, personally means a lot to me, but I'm also very excited to hear from all of you guys. So thank you so much for being a part of this. I can't wait to hear more. And thank you. Yeah, I'm excited.
Wonderful. Well, without further ado, I'll hand it off to our host and moderator for this evening, Tara Moriarty. I'll let her introduce herself and then walk through the format that we're going to be taking this evening.
All right. Thank you. Thanks so much for joining us here. This is the first virtual political forum I've ever done, so I'm super excited. If you don't know me, the majority of my career was spent as a broadcast journalist. I worked at KTVU for 10 years, and prior to that, I was in the business for 25 years before I became the Director of Communications for London Breed's mayoral campaign in San Francisco. And now I currently work as the Internal Communications Manager at San Francisco International Airport, doing a bunch of videos there. And one of the most recent ones was actually one about diversity, a very topical, you know, topic, I guess we should say, at this stage. And I was really happy about it because it ended up becoming the City of San Francisco's video that they use for diversity for the Human Resources Department. So anyway, that's enough about me. I just wanted to say again that I'm really happy that everybody's here, and we were having a chance to chat a little bit before we went live here. And this is exciting because it's just a click away, and nobody has to travel in their car to get anywhere or figure out babysitting. So I think this is going to be a very lively discussion, and I'm looking forward to all of the candidates being super engaged. What we're going to do is we are going to have all five candidates sort of introduce themselves, so you can get a chance to know them. The first 25 minutes, we're going to cover some questions ranging from social justice to jobs in the economy, budget challenges, and each of the candidates is going to have one minute to respond. Now, what you're going to notice is, who's my red card holder? Is that you, Bobak?
Yep, I'm over here with the 30 and the 5.
So we've got the yellow post-it, which means you're halfway through, and we've got the pink post-it, which means wrap it up. This is how we do it in news. We say wrap it up. Then we are going to have the last half hour focus on questions centered around public transit and our neighborhood parks. And then finally, we'll have some concluding remarks, and each candidate is going to have a minute for that. So that's sort of the outline for this evening. And I guess we will begin. Should we start with our first question? What I'm going to do, all of the candidates, I'm going to give you each a chance to answer first, okay? So I'm going to try to just make it as fair as possible, and just kind of, one person will start, maybe we'll start with Connie, and then we'll go down the list, and then we'll rotate it, and we'll keep going. So everybody has a chance to be first and last and in the middle somewhere. All right. And of course, my phone is locked up, and thank God I have facial recognition now because every time I have the mask on, have you guys noticed that? It doesn't work anymore. All right. So our opening question is actually about criminal justice reform. And again, let me get my, I'm going to take some notes here so that I know who started first. We're going to start with Connie Chan. Connie, why don't we give you a, first, let's go through and do the introductions, and then we'll start on our social justice question. So take the floor, Connie Chan.
Well, thank you so much. It's very excited, so excited to be here today. It's some familiar faces. And my name is Connie Chan. It's an honor to be running for District One Supervisor. I'm a first-generation immigrant. I came here to San Francisco since when I was 13 years old. My mom still live in the same rent-controlled apartment that I grew up in, in Chinatown. And today, you know, with my partner, who's a firefighter in San Francisco, we're raising our, just turned seven years old last week, and going to be a second grader at Lafayette Elementary in the Richmond. San Francisco has been a great home for my family and I, and we're really grateful to be here. And in fact, you know, just thinking about how far we have come, and it's very sentimental for me to be here with, especially the Ed Lee Dem Club today, just thinking about, you know, our late Mayor Ed Lee, who also was born, you know, first-generation immigrants, grew up in Seattle, public housing, and how we are really passionate about, you know, tenants' rights in San Francisco. But just seeing that the income divide has increased by the day, it's been challenging for our tenants, even our homeowners with fixed income, small businesses. Those are the challenges that, you know, we're facing together, even all and more so during this pandemic. So I'm here, and I'm committed to fight for our Richmond community to stay diverse and here.
All right. Thank you so much, Connie. And next, we are going to have Veronica Shinzato. Veronica, you have the floor.
Thank you. Well, first, to the Ed Lee Democratic Club, United Democratic Club, thank you for organizing today's forum, and for everyone who took the time this evening to be with us. Again, my name is Veronica Shinzato. For far too long, our government has been out of touch with the struggles of so many struggling here in San Francisco, particularly our families, and I'm running to change that. I'm a longtime resident of the Richmond District. I'm your neighbor. Running to make sure you have a voice at City Hall. You need someone who understands your struggles to represent you and not the same old politics. I'm a working, single mom, a tenant, a small business owner who cannot afford to buy a home here in San Francisco while maintaining a full-time job at the state of California. So please know that I understand what you're going through. I see you, I hear you, I see your pain. And I'm running to fight for San Francisco that works for all, not just the privileged few. Politicians often talk about problems, but I'm running to offer concrete solutions. I spent the last two decades working in local and state government as a community and taxpayer advocate, and on behalf of communities often ignored, unheard, and overlooked. It's time we change that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Veronica. We appreciate that. And next up, we have Amanda Inocencio. Amanda, you have the floor to introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm having technical difficulties. I don't know what I missed. I just signed on. I apologize, folks. I don't know what's going on with my computer. Sorry. I'm Amanda Inocencio. I want to thank you for having me this evening. How much time do I have to speak?
You have one minute.
Ah, okay. I am a person who lives in the Richmond District. I've lived here for 10 years. I've lived in San Francisco for 36 years. I'm interested in running for District Supervisor because I see a lot of issues that are happening, not only in our city, but locally here in our district that need to have attention. I would be focusing primarily on housing and homelessness, public safety, small business, and also beautification of the community. I consider myself a fiscal conservative and a social liberal. I'm an attorney, and I represent children and families in San Francisco, independency, delinquency court, education law, and also appellate work. And I have a long history of social activism.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. We appreciate that. And just so you know, Amanda, the rules are, I think you probably saw, Bobak has some cue cards for you. When you're halfway through, he'll put up the yellow post-it, which says 30 seconds, and the pink post-it says five seconds, so that means wrap up your thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Marjonne Philhauer. Marjonne, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Marjonne Philhauer. Thank you so much for putting this together. I know this is like, you know, the seventh forum that so many of us have participated in, and so I appreciate everyone, like, sticking with it and being interested in this race. I was born here in the Richmond. I grew up on the peninsula. And then my husband and I made the conscious decision over 15 years ago to come back here and raise our three kids here. So I have a rising eighth grader, fifth grader, and second grader. And I get asked a lot, why I'm running for supervisor? And you have three kids. Why are you running for supervisor? And my answer is usually, it's because of my three kids that I'm running for supervisor. And I want them to be able to have the opportunities that my parents came to this country to give to us. So I'm running a small business here in the Richmond. A couple of years ago, my sister and I opened a pottery shop and, right there on Balboa. And I think we need a really hands-on approach from City Hall. Status quo hasn't been working, and I think we need a change, given what we've seen here over the past 20 years. So I'm looking forward to talking about those tough issues tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much, Marjonne. Next up, we have Sherman De Silva. Oh, Sherman, you might want to take your mute off. There you go. We can hear you now.
Apologies. Thank you first for hosting this event. My name is Sherman De Silva. I'm running for the Board of Supervisors because I feel that a lot of the things that we need in the neighborhood, basic things like making sure the streets are clean, that the roads are paved, these things are not being taken care of in the district. They haven't been taken care of in the last 20 years. I was born in the neighborhood. I've lived here my entire life. I think a lot of people today, we take this as for granted, that that's just the way it has to be. And I remember the district when it was not like that, and I think we need to get back to those core principles where we focus on a lot of the basic things that we need to, that we need in the neighborhood, making sure that all these basic services are taken care of before we try to do all these big things that, that we have candidates say they want to do every four years. A lot of these big issues that candidates want to focus on, they ultimately are not decided by the, by your supervisor. They end up being put on the ballot, and the voters decide those anyway, and then these core issues are, are never addressed anyway. So I hope you support what we want to do, and if you do, please check us out. Thank you.
All right. Great. You guys are all doing such a great time, such a great job with the time. So thank you so much for staying on point. Next up, we, our final candidate, we have David Lee. David Lee?
Hi. Thank you very much for organizing this event. I'm David Lee. I am a native San Franciscan. I was born at Chinese Hospital in Chinatown, but spent most of my life in the Richmond District. I graduated from Wallenberg High School, went to San Francisco State, and became a teacher there, where I've been teaching political science at San Francisco State for over 15 years. I also am an educator for English Second Language programs at Laney College in Oakland. My wife and I started a business here on Gary Boulevard about 10 years ago, where we serve neighbors. And it's been going strong, and we, you know, heard so many just gut-wrenching stories from our clients and our friends about how they're struggling with COVID-19. I raised both our children here. They are both college-age, and I'm running because I want to make a difference for this neighborhood. The Richmond is my home. My brother lives here. His family is being raised here as well. My friends are still in the neighborhood. This is a community that has nourished my family, has nourished me. I strongly believe in the Richmond District and staying here in San Francisco when many of my classmates left.
Okay, David, your time is actually up, so we're going to have to cut you off. I'm so sorry. You guys have to really stick by the time cues. Thank you so much, David. We appreciate it. And we're going to head straight to our first question. This is regarding social justice, and I'm sure all of you know about what has happened recently with George Floyd and the protests that have been set off as a result of his killing. As the nation and community, we have all been collectively horrified by what we have seen, the police officers that were sworn to protect and serve, the outrage that we see through, throughout America, clearly a response to decades of institutionalized oppression and racism. It also shows a deep distrust of the criminal justice system. As supervisor, what would you do to address the institutionalized racism in our criminal justice system? And how would you build trust between our marginalized communities and the SFPD? We're going to start this question in the order that we just went in, and then we'll shift it, and then everybody will get a chance to go first. So Connie Chan, you are the first up to answer this question.
Thank you, and I agree that this is a very timely question. You know, we know that the, our San Francisco Police Department has increased their budget by 58% in the last decade, and yet, you know, even before the pandemic and even before the Black Lives Matter movements reacquainting, that we knew that, especially for immigrants and communities of color, you know, we were facing a lot of challenges and issues around safety. So the question really is about, how do we restructure our police department? I think first and foremost, one of the challenges has been, you know, since 2016, the Department of Justice has provided a recommendation of 272 recommendations that I think that the San Francisco Police Department should move forward while they only have accomplished about 60 of them. They really should now implement it entirely, in its entirety, immediately. And I think, last but not least, I think there's proposal proposed by Mayor Lee recently, be it about, you know, ending the calls to non-emergency situation for our police department. I think those are the things that restructuring their roles in our community, and we should continue to push forward.
Okay. Thank you so much, Connie, for your response. Up next, we have Veronica Shinzato, who will answer this question regarding George Floyd and the protests that have ensued, and what would you do as supervisor, again, to build trust between our marginalized communities and the SFPD? Go ahead, Veronica.
You know, as a mother of a 21-year-old who's six foot three, 280 pounds, and plays football, this is close to me. I'm raising a boy that I tell every day, comply, comply, comply. While it's not your responsibility to deescalate a situation, it is your responsibility to stay alive for your mom. So this is very close to me, but, you know, I really think there has to be an emphasis away from heavy policing to reinvesting in our community. We have to improve police accountability and citizen oversight by requiring all officers' complaints to be investigated and making recommendations from the community to, you know, the chief of police and other actions. We need to see a significant reduction of police, I think, in our community as we all want to move from heavy policing. I really think we need to move towards community policing and really focusing on SFPD's police budget, a $700 million budget for 800,000 residents here in San Francisco. So as we move, we need to look at the fact that, you know, we need to reinvest a lot of that money and look at it and reinvest it in our community, mental health services, in our Black and Brown communities, in our schools. And I think if we start doing that in conjunction with SFPD, you'll see a better relationship in our community.
Thank you so much, Veronica, for your response. Next up, we have Amanda Inocencio. Amanda, you have the floor. Amanda, you are on mute, so remember to unmute yourself. We still can't hear you, so make sure you go ahead and press the little microphone that's located on the lower left-hand side of your screen. It's a little microphone, and press that button. So you'll see a big box, and we all look like Brady Bunch in it. Go to the bottom left-hand side.
Yeah. There you go. Okay. I just can't see you now. I've been hearing you talk. I just can't see the screen now. It's gone dark. Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm really having some problems with the Zoom, and I think I just need to upload the software again or something. I apologize. So the question was the trust with the police officers, and the second part was, how do we create institutionalized, how do we, how do we respond to institutionalized racism in our criminal justice system? Can you hear me?
Yes. That is indeed the question.
That's the question. Okay. So one of the things Chesa Boudin has been talking about in light of all of this, which I'm completely on board with, is a district attorney who does blind petitioning against the suspect or the defendant, in which they take out the name, the identity, the gender, the ethnicity, and everything that has to do with the person that they're charging. And Gaskon actually started this, and he was actually a very progressive district attorney as well, but Chase is going to implement that program. I think that one way that we get institutionalized racism out of our criminal justice system is to do that. We also need to deal with jury instructions when we're issuing a jury instructions regarding a witness or victim in terms of the racial identity of the defendant, as well as some of the other witnesses. And they have to have very clear jury instructions, and I can't remember the number of that jury instruction, but it's really important, and I did some work around that. The one thing I want to say, San Francisco--
I'm so sorry, but you are--
Okay.
--out of time. Apologize.
And I'm sorry. I'm going to leave this feed and then come back to it because I want to see if I can fix my technicality. So I'll sign off, and then I'll be back, folks. Sorry.
Okay. Thanks, Amanda. Up next, we have Marjonne Philhauer. And to repeat the question, as supervisor, what would you do to address the institutionalized racism in our criminal justice system? And how would you build trust between our marginalized folks and the SFPD?
So I think the year 2020, I mean, the year that we couldn't have predicted, I do think that our children and grandchildren are going to look at this year as a year of transformational reform, and when we were all able to collectively address institutionalized racism and confront it, both in our society and in our criminal justice system. I think luckily, we do have a roadmap that was put in place back in 2015 by the Obama Department of Justice, 272 recommendations, a fraction of which have been implemented here in San Francisco, and SFPD has already engaged in that. I think as supervisor, you know, it will be important to push for that. It's been over three years since our Board of Supervisors has addressed the Department of Justice reforms. And I think what it focuses on is what we need to be focusing on around transparency, accountability, training, disciplinary actions, and really getting our house in order around what's already before us. And I think that requires leadership and action and addressing those things. You know, one of, there are several pillars in the Department of Justice report, one of which is building trust and legitimacy with the community, which goes into so much of what we've already discussed as a city. And I think it's about implementing that in a way that's meaningful because now it's more urgent than ever.
Okay. Thank you so much, Marjonne. Up next, we have Sherman De Silva. And to repeat the question, as supervisor, what would you do to address racism in our criminal justice system, and how would you build trust between communities and the SFPD?
So I think the first thing that, when, when the police are interacting with people, we have to, we have to make sure the police understand their job is not to judge people. Their job is to enforce the law. As somebody who's had personal encounters with the police, I think that, number one, the police department keeps a lot of these complaints hidden. They don't make it public. They say it's a personnel matter, and that, to me, that's not acceptable. We need to be able to track officers that are having problems and get rid of officers that are, that have a long list of complaints. We can't do that if it's not open to the public. So first thing, I'd make sure all of the complaints are public records, so everybody can see them. The police should not be investigating themselves. It should be an outside agency or an outside department to investigate any police complaints. Cameras should be worn all the time, and the video from those, from those officers should not only be viewed when a complaint is filed, we should have a citizen panel that monitors at random different officers to make sure they're in compliance with city policy all the time, not just when a complaint is made. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sherman. Up next, we have David Lee. David Lee?
I think the San Francisco Police Department has completely dropped the ball on implementing the DOJ's reform. It was unconscionable to think that so much time has passed, and some, only 40 of those reforms have been implemented. Your, I think it's time to link funding to performance. If the Board of Supervisors is serious about making sure those reforms are implemented by the police, we should set performance metrics based on how many of the reforms are actually carried out. That will determine the level of funding. And I am in favor of moving our funding away from police enforcement to mental health services, to community services, to address the needs of our community. Where I work at Peralta Community College, this last week, we organized and voted out our Alameda County Sheriff's Department from our campus. We are implementing exactly that, taking the $4.5 million that was spent on the sheriff's department every year and implementing community-based solutions. So if we could do it at Peralta, we can do it here in San Francisco, and we need to tie--
Thank you, David. I'm sorry, your time is up. I feel like the hall monitor here. I'm sorry, folks, but I have to cut you off. I'll try to give you a couple of extra seconds here and there if I can. Let's start with our first. That was, that was a question that we actually really wanted to address, and so glad we all got a chance to say how we felt about that, because we did have a political forum that was scheduled for, I think it was about a month ago, was it, Bobak? And we just felt, in, in light of everything that was happening and all of the hurt and the anger that everybody, you know, was experiencing in the community, this forum, it just, we felt like it was good to just take a breather and, and come back and visit this later. So that's why we are having this tonight, and it has been delayed, is because of the events that, that have happened across the United States and the world. The first question, the theme that we have going here for the next 25 minutes is regarding the city budget, the economy, and jobs. This time, we're going to start with Veronica, and the question is, the city of San Francisco is facing a potential $1.7 to $2.5 billion shortfall as a result of lost tax revenue due to the coronavirus recession. Which parts of the city budget would you prioritize cutting due to the legal necessity of having a balanced budget? Veronica, you have the floor.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think every department is going to have to get cut, 5% to 15%. I don't think there's one social service program more important than the other. But I think as we move towards, you know, recovery, we have to really look at recovery and resilience, and San Francisco's economy that works for everyone who lives here. So I'm looking at like three points. First of all, relief. Extend financial relief and assistance to San Francisco workers affected by COVID-19, especially those who were left out at the federal and state level. And continue to support small businesses. Recovery. We have to start investing in infrastructure, in our parks, to generate job growth and increase consumer spending. And then resilience. We have to identify additional sources from the federal and state level to help fund these special projects. And fourth, I think we really need to reevaluate government spending, how, how we spend it in the past, how we're spending it now, and how we spend it in the future with accountability and transparency.
All right. Great. You were, you were quick, Veronica. Thank you. Next up, we have Amanda Inocencio. And just again, to repeat the question, it's regarding the budget shortfall, and what parts of the ballot, the budget would you prioritize in order to have a balanced budget? And again, Amanda, I'm going to ask that you unmute your microphone.
Thank you. I got this now.
We're getting there. We all have challenges with--
I think I've got a good, I think I've got a good Zoom now connection. I would, I would cut the labor that we have on the city level. San Francisco employs 30,000 people. It's the second-largest employer outside of Salesforce. We are very, very staffed, and that is one area that we're going to just need to start to cut. I would stop all unnecessary roadwork right now, and any contracts that we can possibly hold up and not have to pay on. hold up and not have to pay on. Um, and I'd look to whatever we can do to, um, have some of our loans and bonds deferred at this point, so we don't have to pay back those right away. I, I would call an assembly right away to look at our homelessness spending. We can't cut human services entirely, but we can look and see where we're spending some of our money on those services to see if there's any duplicative overlap, um, when we're providing human services for folks.
All right, you surprised me, Amanda. Like, I thought you were gonna go on, but you didn't, and so I'm back.
If I stop early, I can say submitted, so you know I'm finished, if you want.
Thank you very much. Uh, up next is Marjonne Philhauer.
So I think, um, one thing to be very cognizant of is the fact that there are going to be cuts across the board, and to be, um, really thoughtful about ensuring that we protect our most vulnerable, seniors, um, very low-income individuals, um, and continuing to address homelessness. I think by virtue of the fact that we will be cutting budgets across the board, um, it's going to require, you know, we talk a lot about audits and reassessing how we do things, um, where there are duplicative services. I mean, I think we can do this. Um, it's just a testament to what's happened and has languished over the past couple of decades where we're not doing this. Um, and I think that, you know, especially with our local businesses, our small businesses, um, there are experts who say that a third of the businesses that have shut down are going to stay shut down. And I think it's important to know that these local businesses have people behind them. Um, and so I think between, um, streamlining, figuring out where we have duplicative services, and understanding that everyone, all departments will, um, suffer from these cuts, um, that we do everything we can, especially to protect, um, those who are the most vulnerable in our city.
All right. Thank you, Marjonne. Up next, we have Sherman De Silva. Sherman?
Yeah, so I, I agree with the, what a lot of people have said. Uh, you know, labor is the biggest cost in any organization, and in San Francisco, it's no different. Uh, we've got to, um, we've got to figure out, um, a, a percentage that we have to trim off, uh, of every department. Um, we need to, we need to look to the department heads to figure out how we're going to get some of the savings that we need to get in order to balance our budget. Uh, the other thing we might have to start looking at is some of the, uh, contracts and some of the requirements that we have for the vendors and the contractors that we use. Uh, we might have to, um, we might have to drop some of the requirements that we and the voters have put in, uh, in order to lower the cost so that, that the people of San Francisco can still maintain the service level at a lower cost. Uh, so all, I think all those things are on the table. Um, we need to use, uh, a combination of those in order to get down to, um, to a level where we can balance our budget.
Okay, thank you, Sherman. Up next, we have David Lee, uh, the final person to, uh, answer this question regarding balancing the budget.
I would support a lot of what, uh, people have said about looking at the, um, uh, making budget cuts, uh, where it's sensible. However, uh, I do not support new taxes for the Richmond District to get our way out of the, uh, budget. And I will, the budget mess, and I will oppose new taxes to the Richmond District residents, uh, in order to bail out, um, the inefficiencies of City Hall. Uh, we've read, um, many stories about how, uh, departments have squandered, uh, fund, public funds, precious public funds on projects. Uh, we need to hold it accountable. And, uh, if I'm a supervisor representing this district, I will not support, uh, new taxes, um, for Richmond District residents. I think we're all struggling enough.
All right. Thank you so much, David. And of course, I didn't forget you, Connie. I was looking at my notes, and I was like, okay, Connie is the last one. So Connie, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, I want to put things in perspective. In 2018, we have, currently, we have $12.5 billion budget. In 2018, we have about $11 billion budget. It really means that we have to live within our means to think about the peak of our economies at that time. And then I think that, uh, another thing about, you know, especially the report that just came out about how important it is to have transparency and budget accountability in City Hall, um, and the report that I'm mentioning is really the Controller's Report regarding our Department of Public Works and how the contract has been issued, and really just knowing that even in 2018, that Department of Public Works, uh, has been charged with $400,000 to hire a PR firm to do a survey on our street's conditions, which later then was contradicted by our Controller's, uh, own audit. And so we know that budget accountability, how we spend money is actually very critical. Now, now, last but not least, you know, during this pandemic, billionaires, Americans billionaires, has made more than $434 billion alone, you know, so that we know. And how is that relevant to San Francisco? San Francisco actually is ranked four in the world with most billionaires per capita. So I say we can actually check some of our billionaires and CEOs and corporations to help support our, um, city government, as well as, um, you know, definitely our small businesses.
Okay, thank you so much, Connie. Um, the next question that we have, we're actually going to reverse it up. It's, it's a very similar question, but what we're asking is same premise, it's but reversed. Which parts of the city budget would you fight hardest to preserve from cuts and why? This time, we're going to start with Amanda Inosencio. Amanda, you have the floor. And Amanda, let's not forget-
Thank you.
Amanda, you're gonna get this by the end of this hour, okay?
Um, so back to your original question, in terms of making the, um, the justice system more, you know, racially, um, relevant, uh, is we should not be cutting our criminal justice system budget at all. And in fact, what we should be doing is looking for those dollars in order to support what we need to support people who are most vulnerable in our community and are suffering, um, uh, the fallout of, um, social injustices through the history of our country. So I would not cut anything out of the public defender's office, the district attorney's office, or the necessary things the police need in order to do their job efficiently and effectively. Um, I would also fight for housing for homeless people in some way, shape, or form. They've got to get off of our streets. It's a disgrace, and it harms and hurts everyone.
Hey, thank you so much, Amanda. Next up is Marjonne Philhauer. Again, Marjonne, which parts of the city budget would you fight hardest to preserve?
So I, as a corollary to the last question, um, I, I stick with my original premise that we have to really, um, be real about what's happening here, um, and also the political realities around how the budget is going to get decided. Um, and all departments are going to feel the cuts. And, um, I think that focusing on areas that are essential, right, um, especially to residents in the Richmond District, but all over San Francisco is going to be very important. But I think in light of the real situation, that everyone is going to be suffering cuts, that really focusing on where those duplicative services are, so we can still serve residents. So that means ensuring that small businesses can stay afloat. It means addressing homelessness. It means ensuring that residents feel safe in their neighborhoods, um, and that we're providing those essential services like, um, clean streets to our local merchants and residents. So, um, I think it's just as a corollary to that last question, um, it's understanding what the reality is and working within that, um, and living within our means.
Okay, great. Thanks, Marjonne. Up next, we have Sherman De Silva. Can you talk-
So, um, I think that, uh, you know, everything has to be on the table. I, I don't think we can pigeonhole any particular areas and say, okay, we're going to make these areas exempt. Uh, but I do think there's certain, certain things that maybe we'll have to prioritize to limit the amount of cuts. And socially, certainly social services for people who have the least, I think those, uh, probably we will try to cut the least amount. And public safety and fire, I think those things, uh, they have to be maintained because, uh, they're necessary for the public safety. Uh, but, you know, they might have to share in the, in the, uh, they, they probably will have to share in, in the cuts, just like every other department. Uh, but we'll have to see, uh, what the allocation needs to be in order to maintain, uh, public safety and social services.
Okay, thank you so much, Sherman. Up next, we have David Lee. David?
I would prioritize services to the Richmond District. I would look at what our Richmond District, uh, receives in services, uh, and I would look to prioritize saving them from cuts. Uh, for too long, the Richmond District has been taxed and, um, uh, taxed for services that we do not benefit from. And I would put the Richmond first. I would analyze the budget and make sure that, uh, the budget serves our community, and I would provide, prioritize, uh, those departments that serve our neighborhood first.
Okay, thank you so much, David. Up next, we have Connie Chan. Connie?
I think, uh, when it comes to about how, what do we fight hardest, it, it really means like who are we going to fight for within the city budget? And the who, I would say are the working families, immigrants, and communities of color. That really has been disproportionately, um, hurt, especially by this pandemic and relates, um, you know, systemic racism, um, already for a long, long time. And so those are the people that we really need to fight for in terms of our city services and programs. And, you know, that really means that how can we make sure that especially now, knowing that what we know, it's a lot of people are going to be losing their homes, um, tenants, even homeowners with fixed income. So let's keep, make sure that we keep people housed. Let's make sure that they have, um, access to public health, especially during this pandemic, and making sure that they have care. Um, you know, obviously to, the goal ultimately is keep our community safe, uh, and healthy at this moment, and so that we can get through this pandemic.
All right. Thank you so much, Connie. And Veronica, uh, you are the last person to answer this question.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. We were talking, uh, the last go-round about the city budget. Uh, this is a, a lot to do with that. This question is basically asking, which parts of the city budget would you fight hardest to keep?
So I think, you know, with COVID-19 and the economic impact that it's had, every department's going to get affected. Everyone in San Francisco is going to feel the burden. But as a parent of a seven-year, of a 10-year-old who attends Lafayette Elementary, who has special needs, I would say our children, education can't, we cannot bear to cut, you know, our public schools anymore. One way to fight income inequalities, and we're seeing this during COVID-19, is through education. So I would fight to keep our public schools funded. I would fight to keep CCSF free, so that we continue and expand our vocational programs. I think it's really important that we start focusing on our San Francisco families and children and the effect COVID-19 has had on our children. They've really lost almost a year of education. And how do we get our kids back on track to be able to compete in the future is what I think we need to start looking at and not cutting.
Okay, thank you so much, Veronica. We're gonna have a new question now, and, and Marjonne, you are going to be the first to answer this question. Yes, your turn. All right. As the city budget and city services continue to shrink for the foreseeable future, it will become more important to have an open transparent government. Uh, how will you ensure that residents continue to have access and clarity when it comes to city services, regulations, and processes? Marjonne?
Thanks. Um, so I have always said that it is the primary responsibility of government to be relevant to the constituents it serves. And, you know, I've been working in the community and in government and politics for the past 30 years, and one of my first political mentors, the late Congressman Tom Lantos, taught me that, um, that what you do and how you serve must be relevant to the people that you're representing. And if you aren't relevant, and if what you're doing isn't relevant to the neighbors that you're representing, representing, then that's a failure on the government's part, not on the neighbors. And so I think that, um, one, we need to audit, um, departments where necessary. Um, I think we need to be transparent in how we procure contracts, um, and how we spend our money. That should be now more than ever available online. I think through this pandemic, one thing we've realized is we don't always have to physically be at the hearing. We can do things online. Um, and I think, you know, we talk about all these issues. There are thousands and thousands, an infinite number of issues that we can talk about as candidates. And one thing I always like to share is how I would approach the issues, right? Going litmus test after litmus test isn't the way to kind of figure out if you're interested in how a person will lead. It's the process.
Thank you, Marjonne. Uh, next up, we have Sherman De Silva. Sherman, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, the first role of any representative is to make sure that the people he or she represents understand what is happening at City Hall. And they shouldn't be hearing about it on the news or after the fact. They need to know on an ongoing basis what is happening at City Hall, so that they understand, um, what, what they can do to change course if they disagree with what's happening at City Hall. Uh, three things I would do to implement that is, one, I'd have a district office in, in the district so that, uh, constituents can come anytime and, and talk with me or one of my staff. Let us know what's going on, any problems, and so we can address it at City Hall. Secondly, we need to have monthly meetings so that everybody in the district who has time can come in and see what, uh, what issues came up that month at City Hall, how it potentially can affect them, and what they can do if they disagree with, um, with the policy that's being discussed. And, uh, most importantly, uh, making sure that our neighbors know what's happening. I, I think it's a failure on the representative's part if the first time they hear about something that's going to happen in their neighborhood is when it appears on the nightly news. Uh, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sherman. Up next, we have David Lee.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. As the city budget and city services continue to shrink for the foreseeable future, it will become more important to have open and transparent government policies. How will you ensure that residents continue to have access and clarity when it comes to city services, regulations, and processes?
Yeah, I've been a big proponent of, uh, government transparency. I put a ballot measure on the, um, the November ballot, uh, some years ago to require live streaming of all city meetings, so that a city residents can find out what's happening in their government. Uh, as a supervisor, I would prioritize the Richmond District, and particularly the needs of this neighborhood and this district, and make sure that, uh, the departments are accountable to this district. So, uh, I would demand that each district, uh, report what kind of resources are being, uh, spent here in this neighborhood, and, uh, make sure that we are getting the services that we deserve.
Okay, thank you, David. Connie, you have the question next?
Thank you. Um, you know, I think what we really need to do and continue to do is that we, let's come through the, uh, Controller's Audit Reports. Let's, let's make sure that the Controller audit out of our city departments on a regular basis, and if necessary, that as a board, as a member of the Board Supervisor and as a district supervisor of the Richmond, to actually hold hearing and to make sure that, you know, our stakeholders know about the hearing and be able to, uh, observe the hearing or, and participate as well. And I think that last but not least, you know, also is the fact that we have, um, in Supervisor Sandra Lee Fuer and Supervisor Norman Yee has done this, uh, as a legislation, is to make sure that we actually have budget town hall, uh, and to allow these town halls to be held city-wise, so that folks can come together, uh, our neighborhood can come together to decide and determine how we want to spend our city's budget. Uh, you know, granted, there are set-asides, but besides the set-asides, uh, that is approved by San Francisco's voters, remaining of the general funds, how do we spend them? How do we prioritize the services that are critical, especially for us, you know, in the Richmond? So that's how I would see, you know, pushing forward for transparency and budget accountability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Up next, we have Veronica. Veronica?
So first of all, we need, the Board of Supervisors need a district office. We need to be reachable to the residents in the Richmond District, and every member of the Board of Supervisors should be held accountable to, not only its residents, but the city and counties of San Francisco. With that said, we have to hold city government to the highest level of accountability, and there has to be the highest level of transparency available. And what I mean with that is, you know, when we have public hearings, it should be a genuine public hearings where our voters who have taken the time to participate are actually heard with knowing that decisions weren't made before they got there. And I see, I think we see that in government a lot, where decisions are made behind closed doors, and the public is left to find out what was going on in their own communities, their own backyards, um, through, you know, an email from an elected official explaining what happened, or a press release. And that shouldn't happen in government. There needs to be a higher standard of transparency and accountability in city government. And when it comes to our services, it should be equally divided within all 11 districts. All 11 district voters pay taxes. All 11 district voters deserve to have equal access to social services programs.
All right. Thank you, Veronica, for your response. Up next, we have Amanda. And Amanda, I'm going to remind you to take your, there you go. Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I think San Francisco does a really terrific job on sfgov.org, posting out the different commission hearings and meetings that are taking place, posting the agendas, post, streamlining, um, live what's going on. And also, you can go back and watch the pre-recordings from months, if not years before. I like and sometimes enjoy learning that way about what's going on in our government. Um, I personally would have town hall meetings once a month on certain issues that are coming before our city and particularly our district that, um, people can come in, listen to what's going on, uh, answer questions and offer ideas. I would do the same on nextdoor.com. I'd have a forum on that. I'd have my Facebook page active, and I'd have a district office, um, here and meet with folks on Saturday mornings, as well as my office down at Civic Center twice a month.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Right now, we are actually going to move on to our second theme of questions regarding transportation and parks. Uh, we are actually going to begin with Sherman on this one. The question is, uh, do you think muni should raise fares? What sources of revenue would you propose to allow for maintaining or increasing uni service levels? Sherman?
So I think that, uh, I think, uh, for muni, I think, uh, we do need to raise the fares. I think- I think it needs to be more commensurate with the service that's being provided. If we are purchasing new buses and paying drivers a certain wage. The ridership needs to have some of the burden of that cost. Now, that being said, I do think that more money from parking meters could be redirected to help help Muni keep the amount that we're going to have to raise the cost of the fares down. But I do think the ridership needs to, to bear, bear a lot of that cost. Because they are the users and they're the ones using the service. However, I, I think Muni might need to look at ways that they can reduce some of their overall expenses in order to bring the cost down so that it's, they don't have to raise fares. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sherman. Up next, we have David Lee. David?
I would not support raising Muni fares. I believe also that we need to get the Gary BRT built. It's an essential part of our infrastructure. A hundred and fourteen thousand rides a day happen through the Gary Boulevard. It's the most congested on the west, west of the Mississippi. When I was working pre-COVID-19, it would take me some hours, sometimes hour and a half to get to work. And over 45 minutes just to get downtown. We need to get the BRT built, the Gary BRT built. And we need to bring Bart out to the Richmond district. Bart is essential to the, the growth of our neighborhood. We need to increase the public transportation options. And there are federal dollars available for building out our system. And in fact, just a few years ago, one of the largest bonds, transportation bonds was passed in the Bay Area. Bart is looking at expanding into the west side and has commissioned a $50 million study to look at that. So I, I would be strongly in favor of moving Gary BRT as well as Bart into the Richmond district.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, David. Up next, we have Connie Chan. Connie?
Um, no, no increase of Muni fare, especially during this pandemic where so many are already experiencing hardship. What I think that SFMTA need to do is actually a better management of ridership. Better management of its, the services that it provides. And what it also needs to do is to really coordinate with the MTC, with, with the San Francisco County Transportation Authority. To really make sure that, you know, there is a regional and coordinated effort to do investment in our public transit. And that really means that how can we make ourselves more efficient? And perhaps it's really to think about continued, and that's currently a state conversation really about a consistent centralized one system of fare that allow our riders to travel regionally. And I think that's what MTA needs to do and continue to do so that it, more efficiency, safer and cleaner buses. And that way, then we can increase our ridership. If there are other ways that you can continue to generate revenues.
Thank you so much Connie. Up next, we have Veronica. Veronica, you have the floor.
No, no increase to Muni. As someone who takes the 38 Gary and takes it the first stop and gets off on the last stop, I can tell you that it's not an easy ride and something needs to be done. But, you know, when it comes to the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Authority, it needs citizen oversight. We have several projects that they're currently handling that there's no end date in sight. It's over budget. And these projects are done with very little community input. So with the BTR coming here to Gary, yes, I'm a supporter of transportation infrastructure, but it needs to be done with community input. And the reason I say that is because if we look at Van Ness and how it's affected small businesses. I don't want to see that on Gary Boulevard because our small businesses cannot afford to lose anymore. So when it comes to Muni, it's about a whole transportation system, looking at it as a whole project. And making sure that SMMAT again is accountable and that the process is transparent.
All right. Thank you so much Veronica. Appreciate that answer. And now we have Amanda in Asensio. Amanda?
Currently, we have a few different groups of people who already ride Muni for free, youth, seniors and disabled. And currently, Muni is collecting about 30% of its budget from fares. Increasing Muni for the existing people who take that without increasing services is too much of an ask from Muni at this point. What we need to be doing is looking at, well, first of all, I want to back up and say that the primary issue or effort that Muni always has to put forth is public safety of its passengers. And right now, they're operating at a, at a schedule that is within their budget. To go down and increase their schedule for greater ridership might necessarily impair on the security and safety of their passengers. So there's going to be a fine line. And if we're going to do anything to offer people. If we're going to do anything to supplement Muni's financial standing, we're going to have to do it with other efforts and not raise the fare submitted.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. And last but not least, we have Marjonne.
Yeah, so for your first question, I think at this time during this pandemic, when so many neighbors and residents are suffering financially, now is not the time to raise Muni fares. I think that there were proposals around raising Muni fares with exemptions for seniors, individuals with disabilities, students or individuals on fixed incomes. I, I think it's really important to recognize that we haven't had a holistic conversation on transportation. A lot of it's been piecemeal. When we talk about these other ideas with regard to Bart, which I think is a great idea, with regard to BRT, which we can't have what happened on Van Ness happen here in the Richmond. I think, you know, we need to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time with regard to transportation. And if anything, during this pandemic. It's, I think reopened what that conversation is. And I think the next supervisor will have their work cut out for them as far as engaging with neighbors, but also doing a couple of things at the same time so that we're not taking a linear approach to problem solving.
Okay, thank you, Marjonne. The next question we have is what do you see the best ways to improve transportation in the Richmond district and throughout the city? We go to David Lee, who has the floor first.
Gary BRT is a critical piece of any public transportation solution for the Richmond district. Bart is a critical piece for the Richmond district as well. We need to link our neighborhood to the rest of the city and to jobs, to opportunities, to education, resources and services. And if we don't have a strong infrastructure and we're not planning for a strong infrastructure. We will not be able to do all the things that we've been talking about. So it's really critical to get the BRT, the Gary BRT built, to move it forward and to make sure and hold the MTA accountable. Previous supervisors have not done that. And that's why the MTA has failed on Van Ness Street to live up to its promise. As your supervisor, I will hold the MTA accountable and get Gary BRT built.
Okay, thank you, David, for your response. Up next, we have Connie Chan.
Well, a healthy neighborhood is where everyone can walk and bike around and have equitable access to save, clean, affordable and efficient public transit. So for the Richmond. For, for us, not only we have to make sure that we can get around our neighborhood. We also need to develop a sustainable transit options and expand efficient public transit services to connect our neighborhoods with the west side as well and across the city. I think some of us, actually all of us on this panel living in the Richmond knows that, you know, we, we have one, a very efficient direction to downtown. But let's also make sure that we are connected with our west side neighbors, you know, but through the support of public transit. And it's what it means that I think it's really about bringing our community together and making sure that, you know, our local merchants, working class families, seniors, people with disabilities. You know, immigrants and communities of color will all come together and talk about what the solution should be, should look like and what transit planning should look like for the Richmond. And as a district supervisor, I will make sure that when we do implement these improvements, that it's done on budget and on time. And with a sufficient, efficient plan to mitigate any community impact.
Okay, thank you so much Connie. Up next, we have Veronica. Veronica?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What ways do you think would be best to improve transportation, not only in the Richmond district, but throughout the entire city?
So when it comes to transportation, again, like I mentioned, the BRT is for infrastructure, for the transportation program. But we have to look at how it affects our community now. And because of COVID-19, our businesses cannot take another hit. We know that a lot of businesses are going to stay closed. So we really have to do a communal effort and figure out what is the best thing when it comes to transportation in the Richmond district. But with that said, you know, public safety. For now, my concern right now is to make sure when our seniors get on that bus, they have a seat. Our seniors get on the bus, it is clean. Our seniors get on the bus and they can safely get to their next route. Another thing we need to start looking at when it comes to our public transportation is, you know, realistically, you know, MTA hasn't really been very transparent about how they run their bus system. I'm sorry, I take the 38 Gary in the morning and it's jam packed. I can take it at two o'clock and it's completely empty, but it's still running every five minutes, every 10 minutes. It makes no sense to me if a bus is running empty. When we need more buses at six, seven, eight o'clock in the morning where people are trying to get to work and then coming back home at five, six and PM. So I think we need for now to look at the scheduling. We need to look at their budget. They need to be more transparent about what the projects are. Again, they have to get the community involved in what they really want as a transportation project. Especially in the outer Richmond when we only have.
So sorry, but we have to cut you off because you've gone well over a lot of time. Thank you for your response. Amanda, you have the floor next.
I would, hello, I would support getting a speed rail out here in some way, shape or form, definitely. The Bart is something that folks want. An underground subway is how some people respond to it. I've researched monorail. I think monorail is being used all over Europe and other forms of, of transit in other cities that are far more effective than what we have to offer here. There are a lot of different alternatives to folks getting around. We need to definitely separate the buses from the bicycles. So bicycle riders are safer. You know, really invoke Vision One in San Francisco to keep everyone safe and be able to get people places by their mode of transportation, be it bike or skateboard or what have you. And I would also say I'm very much looking forward to driverless cars in the near future. So we can hop on those quickly and just keep those moving for everyone.
Okay, thanks Amanda. Up next, we have Marjonne. Marjonne?
So I think, well, the first step in improving transportation is to talk about it and not just every four years during the election year. And I think what tends to happen is we get log jams on policies in our neighborhood because all these issues come up every four years and then what happens in between. And I think part of it is assigning metrics and deliverables to our agencies. I absolutely just, like with other departments, I mean, I think, and agencies. I think MTA, there needs to be more of a transparent process. I mean, 38 Gary is arguably one of the busiest lines in North America. But we also need to ensure that we have infrastructure in place so that whether you're walking or biking or on the bus or even in your car for some reason, right? That the streets are working for you and that the streets are safe for you. So I think, you know, understanding how all those things fit together in the transportation ecosystem is going to be important in moving forward. And I think that, I'm really excited that we're having this conversation now, but I think it has to be ongoing because we didn't get here overnight. We didn't get on any of these really challenging issues. We didn't get here overnight. And I think it's from lack of planning and lack of transparency.
All right. Thank you, Marjonne. And lastly, we have Sherman.
So I think, I think we might have to sit down and rethink how Muni delivers services to, to the different neighborhoods in San Francisco. Right now, we've got, I think, four different bus lines that run east to west in, in the Richmond district with stops all along the way. We might want to rethink and how we allocate the resources we have and use the larger vehicles and trains to move more people from like the west side of the city down to downtown and eliminate the stops in between and maybe have buses take care of that situation. So that we can, we, we can use the, the resources that we have more efficiently. Part of the problem with that is, you know, that's, your supervisor is going to have a limited role in affecting the MTA. So I think part of the, part of, one of the issues we might need to do is have the buses under more direct control of the board of supervisors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sherman. We're going to go to our last question now. And I'm gonna do a little bit of a scramble. And I don't know who I'm gonna ask. I'm just gonna point and you guys are gonna go. The, the question is, is one I think the listeners this evening will be really interested to hear the answer to. So the question of allowing sanctioned tent encampments in our public city parks was proposed earlier this year by Supervisor Sandra Fewer. While a list of potential sites was produced by the mayor's agencies, it did not include any potential locations in Golden Gate Park. Should we use public parks to provide sanctioned tent encampments for our unhoused residents? Why or why not? I'm gonna start with Veronica.
Okay, thank you. I looked at you. I was like, she's gonna call me right now. Um, so.
Lady Bunch Square. So I was like, I was right in on you, Veronica.
So regarding encampments of our unhoused population, you know, during COVID-19, our parks are for the residents. Our parks are for, you know, during COVID-19 to social distance, to be able to have our kids ride their bike while, while we watch them. Our seniors to safely be able to enjoy the park, especially during COVID-19 when we're practicing social distancing. Where we are using, utilizing all our open space to really get, at the end of the day, some fresh air. So, you know, when we're talking about unhoused population, we also have to make sure that it doesn't intrude with our, our residents. With our children, with our families, with our seniors. And we have to find a middle ground where it's not to the point where we tell our residents, no, don't go to the park because we're utilizing for something else. So no, our parks are for residents. Our parks are for our seniors, our children to enjoy, especially during COVID-19 when we need this open space to stay safe and healthy.
Okay, thank you Veronica. Up next, we're gonna go to Marjonne.
So I think where we are with regard to individuals experiencing homelessness in the city right now is an abject failure. And it's a failure on the part of government. It's a, it's, we're letting down individuals experiencing homelessness and we're letting down our neighbors. I think that we need to look at empty lots where we could put up safe camping sites. But I think sites like Golden Gate Park, especially since we've been encouraging folks to safely physically distance, aren't the best. Isn't the best place. And I, I would not be for that. However, I do think we need to examine how we got here. And the fact that we're talking about sites that could be schoolyards, right? What happens when kids get back to school and where are those individuals going to go? Another injustice towards individuals experiencing homelessness and also the kids who go to those schools. So I think, you know, part of this, again, didn't happen overnight because of just lack of leadership. Here we are. We weren't planning to experience this pandemic. So I think we can do better all around, but need to find safe places for individuals experiencing homelessness to camp that isn't Golden Gate Park.
Okay, thanks, Marjonne. Up next, we're gonna head over to Connie Chan.
Yeah, thank you. You know, what is, what is happening during this pandemic, it's heartbreaking. And what we really have the option is to move our homeless individual, including the folks in SRO to make sure that they, in single occupancy units, to real, residential units. To really make sure that they can actually move to hotels so that they can actually safely quarantine and safely social distance. And that really is the solution at this time. And we should continue to push forward. Having individual being camp outside, it's before the pandemic or after the pandemic, during the pandemic or after the pandemic. It's really not acceptable and we should not settle for that. We should continue to push to get our homeless individual housed. Be it supportive permanent housing or, you know, at, in, in hotel rooms at this time. So to say, to talk about this, whether they should be camping in Golden Gate Park. I think that we are distracting ourselves to the real solution and that we should continue to commit to that.
Okay, thank you Connie. Right now, we're gonna head over to David Lee.
With COVID-19 cases rising in the Bay Area resurgence and possibly coming back in the fall. I think it's unconscionable that we. I think it's unconscionable that we are allowing our homeless unhoused population to sleep on the sidewalks in tents while there are hotel rooms that we are paying for as a city that are unused. We need to move our homeless population into those hotel rooms right away. This is a public health crisis. Before we start thinking about Golden Gate Park or shared spaces or other locations, we should move the homeless population, the unhoused population into hotels. I just read a story last, a couple of weeks ago about how the mayor has moved some 300 people in the civic center into hotels. If the mayor can do it in civic center, we can do it here in the Richmond district. And as a supervisor for the Richmond, I will do that.
Okay, thank you, David. Up next, we have Sherman. So to you.
We have to have a place for people who are unhoused to be. Our parks are not the place. The, in a city, in an urban area, the parks are a refuge for our residents to go and, and experience the outdoors. It is not the place for people to be camping. That being said, I do support using city resources to house these people who need a place to be, either in hotels, if they're available. If they're not available, I think we should seriously look at our public garages. We've got a lot, we've got a three or four very large garages in the city. They are not being used as efficiently right now because of tourism is down. Those are open spaces that we could allow people to stay and would address the issue without affecting our parks.
Okay, thank you, Sherman. And last but not least, we have Amanda.
Thank you. There was a survey that was done, there was communications that was done in the open forum on Nextdoor.com. There was an overwhelming outcry of the parks not to be used for creating tent sites for homeless people. I believe the community has spoken loudly and for all of the reasons stated, this is a, a public sanctuary for a lot of folks, for, it's their front yard, their backyard, where they take their dogs or kids, et cetera, et cetera. It's a disgrace, of course, that we have homeless people on the streets. We've got to find alternative sites for them that are safe and, and feasible for the interim time and also after social distancing is taken away, which probably won't be for a year. If it's hotels that we can manage at a relative cost that's not going to go on a perpetuity that we can afford. If it's the organized sites that we have at Civic Center at the end of Haight and Stanion that seems to be working, I stopped by there the other day, talked with folks, the management there. It seems to be working for the folks that are staying there more than any other time that they've been homeless, unfortunately. But we've got to find alternatives and it can't be the public parks.
Okay, thanks Amanda. Now we're actually going to have our concluding remarks. And I'm going to just go right back in the reverse direction. So Amanda, we're going to throw it back to you for some final words to say to the crowd.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate being here for you all putting this together. I'm a concerned citizen. I've never run for public office before. I decided at one point that I'm seeing a lot what's going on in our city and I wanted to do something about it and get involved in the political process, something I've stayed away from. I've learned a lot about our city over time. I know a little bit about a lot of things, I guess I could say about myself. And as a lawyer, working in many different facets of community issues, I feel like I'm uniquely positioned to take on this position. I'm going to throw myself full force and full vigor into working on behalf of these issues for my constituents out here in the Richmond district and on behalf of the city of San Francisco. And I ask with honor for your vote, if you find that I'm a candidate, that's worth it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Amanda. And now we go to Sherman.
So every four years, we have some big issues, big, big issues that come up that are divisive in the neighborhood, that pit neighbor against neighbor. Ultimately, all these big issues, they never get decided by your district supervisor. They end up being put on the ballot and the voters decide those issues. But those basic core issues that we see every day when we walk outside our house, is the street clean? Is the street paved? Are the sidewalks in good condition? Are the trash cans overflowing? These are things that we have to live with every single day and these things never seem to get addressed every four years. If I'm, if you decide you want me to serve, I will make sure that these things become the number one priority because they are the things that are going to affect your life day in and day out. I think we need an independent voice in City Hall, not one that is connected to one side or the other on the political spectrum. But somebody is going to be a fair, impartial arbiter of all sides and come up with creative solutions to some of these basic problems that we have.
Okay, thank you, Sherman. And up next, we have David Lee.
You know, as a lifelong San Franciscan, born and raised here, I'm running because this neighborhood is my home. And we need a supervisor who's going to represent the Richmond and who's going to put the Richmond first. City Hall has long ignored our neighborhood. That's why things don't get done. That's why we don't get our share of services. That's why there is so much frustration in our neighborhood. We need to get the BRT built and on track. We need to get BART into the Richmond district. We need to get our economy restarted. We need to address homelessness by putting the homeless population, giving the homeless population the opportunity to live and to stay in hotels and long-term housing, long-term affordable housing. We need to build affordable housing for our population. And I support 100% affordable housing. If you want an independent supervisor who's going to represent your interests here in the Richmond district and focus on the Richmond, you will vote for me. I am your supervisor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Up next is Connie Chan.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. The COVID-19 pandemic has only brought light, brought to lights the policy gap and the income divide in our city that have disproportionately hurt our working people. Especially, we can see that in the Richmond community. These are also the same, very same people who are now putting their health and safety on the line to keep our city running. And this is why I have put together a plan to close that income gap, to make more affordable housing available and help our working people in small business to thrive during this recovery period. And with that same progressive policies and values that gave my immigrant family a new life in San Francisco, I will defend our community, our community in the Richmond to give our, us a new start in, in preserving those old soul of our city. You know, I've been more, you know, in city government for more than 15 years, you know, public service experience and as a working mom, I will not rest until I get the job done. And I hope you can read more about our plan on our website, ConnieChanSF.com. I look forward to having your support and joining us in this fight for our city to have a new start. Thank you.
Thank you Connie. And up next, we have Marjonne Philhauer.
So I think our neighborhood needs a, we need to do things differently. I think it's okay to look around and decide as a resident and as a neighbor that you're not a fan of how things have been going and that we can do better. You know, we talked to, you know, at these forums and online, mostly online now since we can't really go out, about the problems facing our neighborhood. And we get a lot of questions as candidates. And sometimes people like my answers and sometimes they don't. But I'm running to be supervisor for the entire Richmond district. So even if you're not supporting me right now, I'm looking forward to representing you because we are only going to get through these challenges together. One of the things that we strive to do on our campaign is to conduct our campaign as we would lead. And so we announced last week our first ever neighborhood summit where neighbors are coming together from throughout the Richmond and working in neighbors, in working groups around issues that are impacting them. You know, we aren't going to agree on everything, but we're going to have input on everything and this will all culminate in a blueprint for our neighborhood. And I think that can be a really great way to move forward. And we need to keep talking. We can't talk just every four years and we need to rebuild our neighborhood.
Thank you, Marjonne. And last but not least, we have Veronica Shenzado.
Oh, no worries Veronica. First, you know, to the L.A. Democratic Club and the United Democratic Club, thank you for hosting today's event. Tara, thank you for moderating. The fact that we have the highest poverty rate in the Bay Area while being home to the high summer billionaires next to New York is truly unconscionable. We have to do better. If there's one thing we've learned from this pandemic is that it further lays bare the inequities in our government, especially when you look at who are disproportionately harmed by COVID-19. If you're tired of politics as usual, as I am, and the same issues every election year, then join our campaign. Whether you're a moderate, progressive, Republican or independent, everyone is welcome. We're running an inclusive campaign. We're in this for the long haul, but we need your help. So go to VeronicaShenzado.com, join our team, help us meet our deadline by midnight. And at, and at the end of the day, if you have questions, please email me or call me. We answer every email and answer every phone call. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for joining. We really appreciated having you here, sharing your thoughts and ideas with us. This is so important. Politics is so important now more than ever. I think we've all seen that over the past couple of months. And especially now that we're home, a lot of us telecommuting and really having that time to reflect on what is important to us and where we want to see the direction of our city go. So I'm going to turn it back over to Bobak and to Selena so they can give some final comments. But again, thank you all for including me in this. It's been a pleasure hearing all of your different ideas and, and good luck come the election in November.
Thank you.
Thank you Tara. I really appreciate everybody for taking the time out tonight, both to participate as, as the forum candidates, but also all of you on the phone and on Zoom and watching on Facebook. You know, they say democracy dies in darkness. I think that's like the Washington Post headline. But really, if you don't take the time to learn about the people who are running for office and you don't take the time to understand what they're proposing and how they compare and contrast with each other, then we just, you know, it's, it's, it leads to like misunderstandings about what government does and how it can affect your life. So with that said, again, going back to the, the, what I said at the top of the hour, the United Democratic Club is committed to doing the work. We cannot do that without members and without your support and without your involvement. So I urge everybody here to become a member of the United Democratic Club if you aren't already. UnitedDems.org, we, you know, one fee for the year, one small $20 fee for the year and then become a member and attend events and eventually become voting member. Speaking of which, our next event is, we have already, this club has already endorsed Senator Scott Wiener for reelection. So we are hosting a text bank with him at 6:00 PM on July 16th. You can learn more about that event and all the other upcoming events we have, whether they're election forums, panels, educational opportunities, fun things. Eventually we'll meet in person again at UnitedDemsEvents.org. Thanks so much. And I'll leave it to L.A. Dems President Selena to close it off.
Thanks Bobak. I, my, my internet's a little wonky, so I might freeze. But I wanted to thank everybody for their participation today. It's so great to see so many people that care about our community and our neighborhood. And I'm just very humbled to have you all participate. For everyone that's watching and for everyone that's here today, thank you so much. And I hope to see you guys at the next event that the L.A. Dem Club hosts. So thank you again.
And one last point of reference, I realize several people submitted questions in the Q and A. I don't want you to think you were ignored. But we did market this event as the questions were formed by our membership, the two clubs that hosted. They submitted questions in advance. So we didn't take audience questions today deliberately because we wanted the question asked. All the questions that were asked today by Tara were ones put forward by the membership of our clubs. So another reason to join our clubs. So without further ado, we'll, we'll close it out for the evening and see y'all at the next forum.